Yes.
No.
Really? Oh, we're at, um. Did, uh, air? It was in November. Oh, no, that's, uh. Um. For all of them. Oh, they're staying already. No.
That's my, I don't know. But he is.
No, it was more than. Uh. Visionary. Uh, different stage.
Here's the second. Why not?
Yeah. The why is. Right.
Kristen should be joining us.
On here.
Yeah.
And then we can get like. Can Joe and then should do this? Can Joe?
Stay off.
They saw you. So. Recolor shows. Is that what you did?
Well, oh, yeah, no, appreciate it. Yeah. Oh, no, I thought you were. They're going to. Run like a. Has like a sea. In the area that we.
Oh, boy.
Kristen, you have potential to travel, but not house sales.
Oh. Emma.
I don't think Tom's coming. You can't do nothing.
Everybody's. On. Drone.
Yeah.
Their parents.
Parents. Care. And the. The. Row is careful.
Yeah.
The ones that have aim to trail. Or. Is this? Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Are we got YouTube everything ready to go? Got you.
Yeah.
Are you ready? Are you ready on your recorder?
Yes. I just got hit that.
Let's do it.
All right.
Okay, well, some call the city council work session of January fifteenth at six P M. Door roll call, please.
Steve Zastro.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Tom Baylor.
Here.
P C Kinsman.
Here.
Wendy Rainey.
Here.
Kristen Smith.
Here.
And Ken Jones. Not.
Hey, thank you, we have core. Our work session topic tonight is, uh, City of Cordova substitute ordinance. Twelve twenty-one, which was adopted on November sixth. Uh, amending language for clarification of the sales tax code. Um, before we get started, I recognize this is a work session, but I would like to. If there's no objection, uh, allow comments from. Uh, the public, there's not that many here. If anybody want, you think you guys want to make some comments to start us out?
Sure, I'd love to. I do those shorts stack. Sometimes easier to hear before than after.
Well, I did, yeah. It's a work session, so we want to be here to help work.
Right.
So, um, Mark Frye was. Chorsete Trilling. And eight thirteen Wilton Drive. A M sixty-three North Aviation. So I do have a vested interest in sales tax. Um, probably as. One of the businesses in in the community that's the number one collector of sales tax for the community. Um, it's kind of a big deal that that we're here. I I don't. Necessarily love the fact that whenever we look at anything from the attorney or from the city, it looks like. That it's all about the fuel. And I don't want everybody to think that this is, I'm not here because of. The fuel portion. I'm here because we're partners in the community and we want to make sure that everything is taken care of. So, um, especially in the memorandum from Holly that talks about. You know, the single item and how we ended up as a single item is the lowest possible. Saveable item, whether that's a two by four, a toothpick, or can of soup, or a gallon of fuel, cubic yard of gravel. All of those things, when we start breaking it down and looking at how we're collecting sales tax. Um, and what that means for the community, it's pretty significant. Um, having lived in Alaska since nineteen eighty-nine on and off, um, and dealt with rural communities and sales tax, sales tax cap. It's always been. To the, to the. Invoice, not to the item. So a sales tax, um, that would be collected on a new car or, uh. An invoice in Kodiak when I first moved there was fifty bucks. Bought a new car for a dealership, you pay fifty bucks. That's a lot easier to swallow than, um. You know, getting in a ferry and going to Anchorage and buying one tax free. So that was a, that was a big deal for everybody to to kind of. Um, say, okay, well, we can support the community to some extent and, and, um. I think one of the biggest things that we've, we've come to now in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Is we have to generate income. So how do we do that? And and make it equitable? Um, my biggest. One of the biggest things is, is how does this affect the community negatively when we do it to a single item? And and essentially. Um, through discussions and discussing what we, what we have going with the community. Uh, this essentially removes the sales tax cap from everything in the community. So unless you buy one item that costs five thousand dollars or more. There's no sales tax cap. Uh, on anything, whether that's building supplies, whether that's building a boat, whether that's labor, whether that's construction. Um. Whether your house blew, uh, roof blew off and you've got to go to the lumberyard. There's no sales tax exemption. That covers twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars worth of building materials to help you in the community. Um. And and that's significant because people aren't going to come to stay in Cordova. They're going to get on a ferry. Now that runs again and go to Anchorage and buy building materials to to fix their houses. So, um, I think we have to figure out a better way. To nail it down and the, the, the whole bundling portion, which I supported, was a bundle against. Um. Multiple purchases during the same time period to. Uh. Make it one invoice to meet the tax cap or to stay under the three hundred. Three hundred dollars or whatever it was that was less than that. That limits five thousand. Um. So I think that, that, that we missed the intent with the bundling and we've gotten so far down into the weeds that. It's now to a single item and, uh, that, that kind of. Beats the, the voters of the city of Cordova that, that voted to increase the sales tax from six to seven percent. And raise the, the tax cap to. To five thousand bucks. So, um, I'm here to help. I don't want to be part of the problem, but we have to figure out. How that the people that are policing it, which is us. The businesses are the ones that are policing your sales tax. We're the ones that are collecting it for you. We're the ones that are going, no, I'm sorry, guys. You, you can't come back three times with your five hundred gallon tank and fill it up. And that's one invoice. We don't play like that. It's per invoice. We're, we're all living here. We're all using the, the facilities. Um. And and Don, I'm sure is probably one of the hardest. Uh, scrutinizers of sales tax cap because we don't have to deal with it. Right? We just collect it. We're collecting it for you guys, for the city, for all of us. And that's the, the biggest thing is how do we, how do we move forward and do it equitable? Um, yet still meet the intent of what the voters wanted, which was a sales tax cap. So, um. We're here to answer questions and help on how we collect it, on how we make sure that it gets done. Um, we remit it. And, uh, make sure that, that we get to use it for what we need to. So any questions? Just let me know.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Maybe I just want to make any comments?
The manager of North Star, number seven oh one First Street. My home address is. Two oh four. But it's like Mark says, you know, there's a lot of rough that blow on. I mean, I think everyone here knows who loves to run. My neighbors love to run. They're in their seventies, late seventies. They're looking at thirty thousand to put a new roof on their house. They can't afford twenty-one hundred dollars in sales tax. And they won't buy it here. I mean. It, it comes down, I remember having this discussion. Pretty some years ago with city council. How much money? Does a city deserve to make off of an individual sale? I mean, that's, that's how we came up with a sales tax cap. Was on that. There needs to be a limit of what the city can make. Off of a sale. I mean, why should the city make more than the seller? So I think that's what we need to look at. And, you know, I, there's. Like Mark says, we, we need to come up with some stuff. But most of the businesses in town do it right. I have people come in like with a building permit. Okay. A building permit, they come in, they show me their building permit, I exempt their sale. And I am very stickler. Particular, however you say it, on that, because they will come in and they'll buy two before screws, nails. They'll have a tape measure laying there.
Yeah.
Tape measures separate invoice. So that's, I mean, you have to. I think we need to go back to where we were. And figure it out. I think it got lost. Something got lost. And I think that's where we're at. And I'll help however I can to figure it out. But you can't. We, we can't tax our way out of the problems we got. It's just not going to work.
Hey, thanks, Sonny. I have a question for you.
What's that?
Um, the, uh. You know, the change from the building permit. Thing to the. Asking for reimbursement.
Yeah.
Later on, what's your feelings on, on that?
Well, my feelings on that is, is. You've got to trust your businesses. Because we're all in this together. And if they come in with their invoices. And bring it to the city, that's another job somebody else has got to do. They've got to stop whatever they're doing and then they got to get it done. And then before I've had people come in. And they, they forgot to bring their building permit in. And it was a week after. I said, nah, you got to go to the city to get that back. I've already paid it. My paperwork's done. Well, and then the city tells them. We can't pay you back that money. Until that business has submitted their sales tax. So you're asking, you can be asking somebody to wait three months for two thousand dollars. They're not going to wait three months for two thousand dollars. So, and I think that just adds another burden. The city hall that's already. Thin on employees. Or not. You know, it's just another job and it's, I don't think you will. You're not going to get enough money to pay for that person's position. So.
Okay, thank you. That was my.
Yeah.
Thoughts.
Yeah.
But I just needed to hear from.
Okay.
From you, you've probably affected most by that of.
Yeah.
Anybody down.
On that part, yeah.
Anybody else? Is your chance? And if we're in discussions on things and you. Really need to get something in, just raise your hand and I'll. Recognize you as we're discussing here.
Hi, John Bannon, uh, ten twenty Chase Avenue, Will's district and then. Eight eleven Wilton Drive. Um, I really agree with what Mark and, uh, Don said. Uh, they've really said a lot there. Um. Talked a lot about the impacts to my company with fuel. Um, I usually buy twenty-five hundred gallons at a wag, which is probably. Weekly, bi-weekly, and up to. Depending on the year, sixty to seventy thousand gallons. So. You know, I rely on that. Um, tax cap for that twenty-five hundred. I will be taxed. Per gallon. You can do the amount on that. That's going to raise my rates. Chose the board. Everything I do burns diesel fuel. And then you couple that with cubic yards of gravel. So it's going to cost more to make the gravel to tow the fuel. And then nobody will get a break on if they buy ten loads. After ten loads, they're, it just keeps going. So. Um, like Don said, you know, we police it pretty good with what we're doing. You know, we don't combine any invoices like that. Um. Lot of our work, though, you know, is. For Coast Guard and it's not tax anyways, but, you know. All our other work is for all you guys, you know, like I said before, every one of you guys probably. Want to. Um. For sugar. Whether it's snow removal or. Excavation for the sewer line, water line, and it's all going to be affected with this. So, um, just wanted to kind of. I know you all listened to me last time and went over it all, um. But just kind of. Reiterating that and, uh. You know, we want to help too. I just think there could be a different, different ways to do it. So anyways, thank you.
Hey, thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Any males? Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Jake Peterson, Peter's loving. Home address is eight two eight Wilton Drive. Um, more of just repeating what they had said, but, uh, I think. It kind of, kind of comes down to once. The costs of taxes that way, like a ferry ticket in a hotel room in Anchorage. Something they're going to go. Give us stuff in Anchorage, pick up groceries, all everything else they need to do, come back, go, it's just kind of pushing. More and more business, kind of incentivizing just people to do business elsewhere. Um. And. I mean. That just hurts everybody that lives here. So. So, thanks.
Good. Thank you.
Go outward to eleven Breakwater, three oh five Boardwalk. Same things everyone's saying. I mean, I already got people calling me now. Asking to buy engines and have drop ship to Anchorage. They'll go to ferry and get it. Competing with another local that does that already. I mean, you guys got to have the gap. Like it was. So we can do an engine, do an install. That's the only way we have business here. Reinval these, I've got yards and valdez that. I mean, have tax. We're going to push everybody out of here. That's all I got.
Thank you. That's why we're here. Everybody's, we want to make it right. So. Okay, we've got our memo from the attorney. Was Holly online?
She's on, yes.
Okay, where we want to, if you want to start the review for Holly or. You know, just start throwing things up. Okay, there's, go ahead, Holly, your memo is, uh.
All right, I'll be really fast. I actually think this is a, a pretty simple discussion from a legal perspective. One thing to note is while we. Expanded the single item definition to be clearer or, and to create clarity. There were a few changes. Those changes came primarily in the fuel definition where we identify fuel by the gallon. Uh, and we actually talk about identifying a single item for purposes of tax. Uh, we look at what happens when you have an, a single item. And you're looking at goods sold by volume. So that'd be everything from apples that are sold by the pound. To nuts and bolts that maybe sold by weight or gravel or fuel. And then we. Uh, we included within that. An identifier for gravel, which was by the yard, and fuel, which was by the gallon. The gravel reference was a, an example. Of they'll using the lowest unit of measurement that the seller uses to identify and sell the item. And then, uh, fuel was really identifying a measurement. Um, which is. Which is traditionally done throughout Alaska and beyond. So what was placed in the single item definition? Did not change except for with the fuel, right? It, it did not change. How things were done under the letter of law under your code previously. But one of the things that we found was that there was a lot of uncertainty about how to tax different items. And so different sellers. Would file tax returns, uh, imposing the tax in different ways. And so that led administration. To be confused at times and for different administrations to tax things differently. And different sellers to apply the tax differently and therefore. Different payers to pay different amounts. And so we really wanted to get a consistent, uniform. Application. We looked at what the application was under the code currently and simply tried to. Explain that better. So there was more certainty. So when you see in your memo, there's nothing wrong with council considering a change or changing that mechanism. That's absolutely within council's purview. But right now, it's an effect. It really was simply an explanation of what was there before. Um, so I laid out three options and if those don't work for council, we can explore other ones. But really, the three options were. The first one was just to repeal the definition. Um, and that is not an option I would recommend only because. We have dealt with the uncertainty and the legal calls regarding how it's applied and the calls from members of the community and sellers. Regarding that inconsistency. Um, in the past, and it was one of the drivers for the, for the code rewrite, actually. Um, when, uh, former manager. Horworth, uh, brought that. To council. So that's, uh, option one. Option two is. Authorizing the administration to adopt policies, which allows them to look at some of these industries where the by volume. Definition for single item doesn't really work well, or there's other reasons to. Create a different measurement structure. So long as that is done in policy, it can maintain that uniformity. And if, if council decides to go with something like option number two, I'd recommend that you consider, do we want to have a voice in that as council? Do we want to require those policies to come before council for adoption? And under any circumstance, you want to make sure that those get posted on the website so the taxpayers and sellers have notice. And the third option is just to deal with specific industries expressly in the code. And adopt an ordinance amending those provisions. Fuel is traditionally dealt with differently. Um. I mean, it can be done just by the gallon and that's done. Uh, frequently as well, but one of the things that you can do is. Is sort of create a separate cap for fuel because of the way that fuel is administered. That, and the importance of fuel and the need for fuel. Right? Fuel is rarely a choice. It is sort of a necessity. And so that's something to note. So those are the three options I laid out and I think. Um, I would just take questions now and answer and try to be helpful as you work through this.
Uh, go ahead, Kristen.
Thank you. So I, um. I guess, having heard some of the comments. I first want to just say, maybe there's a lot of misinformation circulating about what changes have been made. And I'm thinking specifically about what Ryan McManus was saying about people say. It, it sounds like you're saying that people are now coming to you and saying. They want to drop ship to Anchorage because they're going to be taxed, but that, that wasn't changed. The only, the change we did make was to raise the amount of the cap. But the cap is still in place. So people are. Paying tax on the first five thousand and then not above that. Um, I also have a question about. How did this?
Not correct.
Uh.
If I can interrupt, I'm sorry, Kristen, but I think what he's saying is, is. Where before they would buy the engine and the engine and the install was all one invoice. Now you're going to have the invoice for the engine and now you're going to have the invoice for the install. And any other extra nut and bolt in particular that they're going to need for it. So there's the difference.
Right.
Okay.
Well, all the furnaces, all your oil, all your cool ones, all the fuel filters, everything that was.
Yeah. You got it.
Correct your good hands. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Um, and then I do have a question about how the city has handled fuel purchases in the past. And I think what. I, I was thinking a, about what Holly just said, that the fuel tax, that a fuel tax can be regressive because it is. Something that everybody needs and it's, uh. You know, obviously people are at the lower end of the income. Scale. Have less disposable income and have less of a choice about how they use that. So. Yeah. So I think that's something to think about. But how did the, how did we do, how did we handle fuel purchases in the past? I don't know if Cheryl is there, but. Did the city apply a sales tax to each unit of fuel or was there a tax cap used? By some purchasers to limit how much sales tax they could?
Yeah, um, Chorsete has been recording it per invoice. As Mark was stating earlier.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to double check. Um. Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Yeah, that, I, I guess that's why I just throw out one other option that we do have is to. To say that the cap applies to. Each invoice or sale, whether, you know, sometimes you don't get an invoice, but. If I go to the grocery store and buy. I guess the way I look at it personally is. If you're going to spend five thousand dollars on anything in this town, then you deserve some kind of a break because it's. It costs that much to go somewhere else and get it.
You know, she was, everybody's talking about fuel. Everybody needs a roof on their house.
Yeah.
If they don't have a roof on their house, they don't need fuel.
Yeah, we hear you. It's more than just fuel.
Yeah, it's not just fuel.
Right, it's, it's anything.
It was a cubic yard of gravel.
Yeah, yeah. I hear you. That, that's why I'm saying that.
We've always.
One option that we can do is. Is making it per invoice.
Coming about three thousand yards. That's what it was.
Right, yeah, we got you, John. Go ahead.
So can we define single item as single invoice instead of single item?
Yes, we can do whatever we want to do.
Yeah.
Because that makes a lot more sense and just stop with the minutia definition and just say, single invoice.
That's right. What are the implications if we do that?
I'd be curious to hear from Holly on the implications of that. I'm, I'm just not familiar. Um, but it does sound, my interaction with businesses is it sounds like that's been the practice. Even though this part didn't change in the current code rewrite, it does seem like. Um, I'm new to the game, but it seems like that's been the practice.
And I guess my question then is, yes, there's a legal precedence here also, but I've, from a finance standpoint, if it's already been. Loosely collected that way.
It appears.
We're not in a huge deficit by changing everything and starting to do that.
That would be my best guess, but.
I accept that you don't have the answer. I, I can appreciate it. Go ahead, Councilor Baywood.
Yeah, so. You know, and I guess I'm going to speak with like thirty years of using this tax cap, building homes and, and construction. But the second paragraph. In our. Uh, see, I guess it's the first page under the memorandum. That second paragraph, it says, uh. Historically, different sellers were collecting sales tax differently. For example, one seller might apply tax cap to each yard of gravel while another applied to each truckload. Uh. That's never happened. All right, not that I know of, and I. Maybe it's just an example, but it's a poor example. It's misleading. And it says, many sellers would treat every, everything built under a single invoice as a single item. Applying the sales tax cap to the total amount of the invoice. Oh, that's exactly the way we've been doing. I've been doing business for thirty years. And I got audited. The city auditor on this tax cap business. And they said, yes, you're doing it right. I think we need, need to go back to what we had. We had it as a single invoice. And, uh, and we've raised it up to five thousand dollars. And if you get a building permit to build a new home. Then you come in and everything in that, everything that goes into that home from dirt to pipe to the refrigerator, the paint on the walls. Falls underneath the tax cap. It doesn't matter how many invoices you have, it falls under the tax cap to the house is done. That's worked beautifully for us. Uh, that's really been the incentive for builders and help build a lot of these homes in town. And then it just simplifies everything, whether we're talking groceries or paint or fuel. It's a single invoice and you've heard from all the retailers and. Providers of these services, they're mindful of it. They're not going to cut any corners and. You know. So that's what we need to get back to and that's where we were up until really this. The current, uh. I want to say the current employees there, they're here now. Um, you know, and it, and it goes down here to say. Uh, trying to think. uh, trying to think, it's, so the purpose of the memorandum is to provide definition, the reason for adoption, appropriate ways to revise, repeal, single definition. If councils will choose, and then it talks about confusion. If there's any confusion or inconsistency, that's on staff. I'm sorry, but that's on staff. I don't, you could probably ask those those, uh, businesses that are in, asking if they've ever gotten anything in writing explaining the tax gap. And I'll bet you they'll tell you no. And I'm not talking about the people that work today. I, I'm talking about go back thirty years. It's never been clearly put out. I never, as a builder and a use of this cap, I never got anything in writing. It was always verbal and that's the way we've always done it. So I think that's the only thing we need to clean up. Just, hey, it's one invoice and a building permit. We can clear that up, give it to everybody and we could move forward with this. So that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so I was asked, I'd be interested to hear, um, from the retailer chair, have you ever done anything other than by invoice, ever in the history?
Yeah.
No.
So who was it? Who was it that worked for the city years ago, financial guy, Dean or Dan? Dean?
There was a dean.
So he came to the shop a long time ago and used our invoices as how to do it right. And it's told from them, the attorney that you do an engine, you meet your cap, so you sell an engine for thirty thousand dollars, that meant the cap. Everything underneath that was taxed exempt. It's how we've been doing it forever. This way is going to kill us. Or we're just going to tell everybody, everyone pays sales tax and the city can write checks. And they're not going to wait three months to get their check. They're going to be up here as soon as we hand them their receipt. And want their money.
Yeah, that's why we're here. Fix that. Anybody else?
Well, I think that one of the, Ryan's, Ryan's got a good point, but Ryan's business partner, the exemption board. You know, as, as one of the largest collectors of sales tax, part of the conversation that started all of this that we're in right now was we called prior to the beginning of the new year to find out what the implications of the, of the new sales tax exemptions were. And that's when they, we found out about this single item. And that's really what started all of this is, how do you go to a single item? When none of us have ever collected on a single item, it may have been a deposition. But we, we had no understanding and never once in the twelve years that I've been around Shore's have, have we dealt with someone from the city sending something out prior to January first, when this was implemented, to say, this is what we need to start collecting. I mean, this was a whole proactive deal and, and I, I realize that everybody at, at, at City Hall and in businesses and holidays and everything are busy, but at the same time, January first, we were supposed to start collecting. And we, you know, we started at just December twelfth was the last time we.
To be fair, council did state that they did not want to carry forward with this. So we were stopped communication at that point.
I get it.
I, I am needing to stand up for anyone.
Guys are, are, are part of it. But I also remember in November, when Mrs. Peterson was here and she was talking to council in the minutes, in the record, it specifically says city staff will communicate and have extensive training with the community members that are collecting the sales tax. That was, that was specific. And I'm not saying that we didn't stop it before that all happened. It certainly, I would like to think that it was going to happen.
It was in the works, I thought.
I, I get it. I, I understand, but the, at the, at the point was, you can't wait until December fifteenth to, to change my entire accounting program to start collecting.
We, we got you, Mark. Give us a chance to fix it. That's why we're here. That's why we're here and that's why we scheduled this because we know there's an issue. We need to fix it. So that's why we're here tonight to to give some direction to get it in, in code so that we can vote and get a change before this quarter show.
Staff definitely welcomes clarification on this.
Correct, yeah.
Mayor?
From the attorney. Thank you. If you want to hear from the attorney.
Yeah, go ahead, Holly.
I do just want to make a couple of things known. And one is, and I'll start with, if you want to create a per invoice sales tax, we can do that, right? We can use that as a single item is a invoice for purposes of the cap. But your code talked about a single item prior to any change being made. And so the language, very clearly on the language was this emphasis on item. And there were some industries where I know that, I mean, I remember getting the calls that that was being done properly. We don't often see industries exceed the five thousand dollar cap. I think a lot of the questions did come up in the, um, in the construction realm and there were questions regarding, but so just, I just want to be clear, when we say fix this, council may want to fix this as a matter of council's policy, but there, but the language, one of the reasons why staff would not be too focused on the single item was simply that the language was clarifying except for, for fuel. Where we saw a very specific measurement added. So I just, I want to clarify that and that should not in any way impact council's decision to amend this again and change the direction. Um, but I would recommend that we get, or that council, along with that ordinance, if that's how council decides to go forward, some understanding of any cost associated with that, because there are other industries in which they are paying per item. You know, that's, they're treating an item as a item, which by the plain meaning of an item is one good, right? So there's a different discussion when you're talking about goods by volume and whether or not we are identifying the lowest unit, whether that's for utilities, for, um, for groceries, right? So that's one discussion. Is it per pound? Is it per yard? Is it per gallon? What's the measurement that we would be using? And saying, nope, we don't want to do that. If you buy five hundred of the same item, that's going to be treated as a single item. And then there's the discussion of, nope, we don't even want to do items anymore. We want to do invoices and that is a deviation. And it will, you know, and that is fine. It sounds like that's been, finance has been doing that in part. But I just want to make sure council understands this is the, where the change is coming. Regardless of whether or not finance was imposing it on invoices in certain industries, it wasn't done wholly, or we don't, you know, because your code didn't say that. So so anyway, so if we make the change, let's make sure that we don't undermine the integrity of the city's code. You know, and so that we just make a change.
Yeah, what, what, I didn't mean by fixing it, mean, mean necessarily that it wasn't there prior. I just mean in practice, it's what it has been, the city, city finance department hasn't been directing this. It's been, it's been pretty much directed by the individual tax collectors, those businesses. And some of them may have been doing it different than others. And that's part of the reason for changing this. I mean, I don't think we need thirty pages to say that our cap applies to the invoice if we, if council so decides to, to do that. But fixing it, in my, in my mind is, is let's match the code to what we want to do in practice and what we have been doing in practice rather than, you know, I mean, we do a lot of things that we don't, aren't following the code, um, word for word. But it just makes it easier for everybody if we, if we make it simple and, uh, straightforward. And I don't think anybody would have a problem with the per invoice thing. So anyway, counsel.
Yeah, I've got a question for the attorney.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Well, and, and Holly, like I've said, every business that I've done business with, that's the way we've done it. It was either with the building permit or single eye or the invoice. What, you keep saying other industries aren't doing it that way. What? In Cordova, what other industries are you speaking of that aren't doing it that way? Did we lose her?
I think you're on mute, Holly.
Ah, there we go. I apologize. I could not get myself off mute. Um, um, so one of them is, you know, the utility industry is a good example. Um, the other one is actually specific and I, if it's okay with council, I didn't bring them today. But I know there are questions that were posed regarding specific invoices from before the change, um, which was a driver. So I can send sort of a list of those, if that's helpful to council. And I think that, uh, it, you know, one of the things that um, we can look into too. Those are just the few I know, right? Like the ones I know of are the ones that are getting, uh, invoiced that way now, that are paying taxes that way now. Um, and so the utilities are the first that I would mention. Um, I don't want to call out specific taxpayers if we can, and sellers, if we can avoid that. Um, but, um, there, there's a few email correspondence that I'm recalling, but those were from, you know, before the rewrite. So I can provide those to council as well. So that's why, because I'm not in the finances, I don't know how far and to what extent the change is going to impact your finances. And I wouldn't be a very good lawyer if I didn't warn you to at least get a picture of that, right? But you're not, here you're talking about what option you want to go with. So thankfully, what that means is if you want an ordinance, uh, making these changes, one of the things that you could direct staff to do is to, at least to some extent, bring back a we have a feeling that this is going to cost X amount, you know, and, and for this is the first time really that the administration, administration is creating a process to actually track and understand where tax revenue is coming from so that they can, next time you're looking at rewrites or revisions, you'll have an idea, a better idea of the costs associated with them. That's what, that's going to be a great tool. Here, I don't know that the administration has that tool yet for council, but at least they can say we think this is going to be a couple million dollars, or when we look into it, actually, everybody's pretty much doing that. And so, um, or was doing it in the past, we're not going to see a change. Um, and the cost of the change now, we estimate to be X, right? So I think that would be useful information for council to have. But we don't have to slow down to get you that information. We can bring you the, the fix as the mayor stated in that. Thank you for that clarification, by the way, mayor. That's very helpful for the record. Um, but we can bring it hand in hand.
And so, Kinsman? Yes, thank you. This is for you, Cheryl. I would be interested to see if we go to an invoice or a bill or whatever this is. I, I, I have known that utilities don't follow the cap. What implication is that going to have? If all sudden a bill and probably C E C would be the one who would be in the realm versus C T C or.
Yeah, and we'll have to partner with them because currently they don't, uh, supply us with individual bills as backup to their sales tax reporting. So we'll have to do a little bit of digging and see what we can find in partnership with them.
What's their, what's their, they don't have, with the exception of canneries, right? And maybe Peterson Wolding, they probably don't have a whole lot of rate payers that have more than a five thousand dollar bill per, per month. I mean, it's not going to be residential, it's not going to be us at Shore's, it's not going to be, it's going to be high use users, canneries, the, the processors. Um, I can think of probably three or four that are going to be above that. The city probably would be there, but, you know.
It's, I'm just looking for the information.
Yeah, and I think that that's one of the.
Thank you.
I talked.
One thing I do want to say, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I just want to make sure when we talk about individual taxpayers or sellers, you know, it creates, we have to be really, really careful. There's, uh, state statutes that that sort of govern that and what we're allowed to talk about. So, I mean, one of the things, I think getting the information to council is absolutely um, appropriate and we will do that. Um, but I think we want to hold off on discussing any individual sellers um, and their tax filings, uh, unless we're talking about them as a, as a whole.
So the obligation overall.
So counsel, we need, before we're done tonight, I'd like to give some direction to Daphne Holly on what we want before us at our next meeting. As far as code changes.
Yeah, as far as code, I, I would like to see the implications if we go and define the code. And so it's clear in the code that we want off of an invoice, what are, and I, I know it's going to be somewhat of a shot in the dark, but an educated guess of what the implications are would be helpful.
Okay.
I, I have a feeling of what it probably is, but that would be probably the responsible.
Okay, yeah.
So switching to per invoice or per sale, is that where we're thinking? Is that what everybody's thinking? Any objection to that? No?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, assuming the one thing that Holly brought up and I, I guess what she's saying without saying it is that what are the implications if we have a have a industrial building in town, I guess I shouldn't name anybody, that's using more than five thousand dollars a month in electricity. So let's say they're using six thousand dollars a month in electricity. Are we losing, if they're paying by kilowatt, every kilowatt's based is taxed up to that six thousand dollars, or are we going to lose that thousand dollars because they hit their five thousand dollar cap? I guess that's the implication of would be losing, how much would be losing on taxes for those utilities? I think that's probably something to look into. I don't, I'm not sure what, what's Alaska Airlines paying a month. I'm not sure what businesses are paying if we're getting that high of utility bill. But that would be the one negative that I could see for this. And I guess it, you know, I'm, it might be acceptable, but we, we should know that before we make any change. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, uh, because again, my personal view from the years I, I have here is anybody anybody that's paying more than five thousand dollars for invoice deserves some credit. And the big payers are the ones that are going to find options to do something different. And if, for example, one of those big people paying twenty thousand dollars for their utility taxes every month decides, well, we're going to start generating our own vector. And what does that do to the rest of the committee? I mean, it's not all cut and drive that, yeah, we lose seven percent on the extra thousand dollars, you know? Fueling or running people to other towns, you might lose fish that you might, that you're encouraging. Um, so I, I think we need to give give a break to those high, high payers too.
Some of those that are paying, I would like to look at it the other way. What, what kind of good can they do in the community if now we're potentially saying, here's a tax break? That you haven't had before. What are you going to do in our community with this tax break?
And we can.
That's how I would.
We can't easily get the information about our own utilities. Those are also currently not on, the tax cap is not implemented on them.
Okay.
Holly, I have a question.
No.
Where in, where in code are you seeing that defined item definition? Cause I'm, where it was a single item. Because I'm, I'm looking at the sales tax definitions and they're saying the sales, right, seven percent should be on all local sales, including rental services within the city.
And the reason for that, and that's an excellent point, it's really important to just note that there is a lag in the codification of the sales tax ordinance. So the single item definition is in the ordinance passed and is in effect. Um, and I believe that the administration has a PDF that has that included, that's posted on the website or on its way, but it's not actually municode. The publisher for the city just has not updated the code. So it's missing updates and that's why you're not seeing it. But it's there. It's been adopted.
Yeah, it's been adopted on page ten. Yeah. And that's what was just adopted before. Yeah, and then it's also referenced on page thirteen as well. This is, it was in the code prior, um, as well. Correct, Holly?
Not the single item definition. Well, it's not in the code prior, but the, um, but the reference to an item, and I think that's, you know, um, what your finance director is sort of saying is, this is not, we defined a term that was defined in some of the provisions and emphasized that it applied only to a single item or a single transaction of service. And emphasized that it applied only to a single item or a single transaction of service. Those were emphasized in the original code. So we just gave it a definition, really emphasized, one of the, the real purpose was not to. I mean, we, we explained what a single item was, but the real purpose, uh, was to add this by volume piece. To make sure that was clear. Um, and so stepping it back to invoice is going to change the code. But I think, again, I think that's, that's within policy purview for council, of course. So, um, but what you, the definition, if you just pull the code up off of Google, is not the code. The sales tax code, because Munich code has a lag in the, um, codification online.
Right, yeah, we'll get there. Uh, Council Kinsman? Yeah, again, for Cheryl, I, I guess I would also like to know, I, I'm not familiar with remote sellers tax. And I know we spent a lot of time on remote sellers tax and then if we want to participate, we have to play by certain rules. I would be interested to know if, if there's any implication of us going per invoice, having that in our sales tax code. If that affects remote seller tax, or they're going to have something to say against it, because that is some money that we receive from them.
That's an excellent, oh, sorry, Cheryl.
Yeah, that's okay. I'll have to find out for sure because I, I know that part of this was driven by their definitions. And I'm not sure if that holds.
Exactly. I, again, I don't expect.
So the remote seller sales tax applies to remote sales only. So what we do with the physical presence tax has nothing to do with what we've adopted from the remote seller's tax. Remote sales tax only applies to remote sellers and distinguishes from physical present sales tax filing. So the remote seller's sales tax does not need to be adopted across the board with everything we do in Cordova. It only pertains to remote sales tax. And this is the code that you want to look.
That is almost true. That was very close to, to true. Um, but, uh, under the constitution, we cannot, we cannot treat brick and mortar. Industries or businesses differently, right? So when we make a decision to tax by invoice, we have to apply that to them as well. And so that's one of the things. Now, there are certain things, for example, there are definitions. And parameters that are adopted by the remote sellers tax commission that we can do differently. But those are, though, as far as the amount of tax and what is taxed, it has to be the same. And so, um, the process for taxing, what's put in the tax return, how long it takes, what the appeal process is. There's lots of leeway there for them to do something differently, and that's what the remote sellers tax commission does. It sets up a different administrative procedure in essence for those businesses. So we will, they will be by invoice, but I think I, you know, and we'll talk to them and see if there's a problem with that, but I don't. You are the ultimate, you are the governing body. And if you want to tax by invoice, then the remote sellers tax commission will note the change. I think we have to give them thirty days, you know, so it just sort of adds, we'll make sure they know before the ordinance goes to public hearing. And then they will implement that change on behalf of the city when taxing remote sellers.
Council Baylor, did you say?
Well, I was just gonna, I was just gonna comment, if somebody's spending five thousand dollars a month in Amazon Prime, that's, uh. They can have the tax deduction. That's a lot of money to be spending on remote.
Yeah, I think we've probably spent more money on Holly tonight than we're going to lose by changing anything. So we've decided we're going to direct them to bring us. The. Change to by invoice.
Or just more information right now?
Eh, no, I think we need the ordinance in here. If we're going to get this in before the end of the quarter, we need to. We need to get going on it. There's no reason to wait, but bring, bring, um. Implications of that or whatever you want to call your documentation of that, um, to that first reading. Uh, as well, uh, what about? Um, and maybe this, this is probably a staff question to start with, the, uh, change on the. Billing permit deduction prior versus coming in to get refunds. What's? Staff's thoughts on that?
Um, I'm, I'm not prepared to answer that, I guess. Hi, I didn't know that that was going to be a topic tonight. But, um, we have heard from people that, you know, the, the. Not much, but that it's going to be more work on our part. It remains to be seen. I mean, we can give it a try or we can.
Yeah, I, I just know that it's going to, it's going to take somebody's time to go through somebody's stack of, of invoices. And, and there's some math involved there back and forth, but that is not, not that it's impossible to do. But it is going to take somebody some time to do that. And it also increases the cost to a builder. During their project and only get their money back and.
My sense is that it's manageable at this time, but I mean, as we hope that Cordova grows and, um, maybe booms a little. That it might not always be manageable. I don't know.
What does council feel on that? I think Mr. Mayor, if we're going to revisit this, we probably should schedule another work session and discuss that. Council, or where staff can come with some information.
Yeah, we kind of discussed that a whole lot because this has been the focus, um, but I'm sure there's input to be had.
Yeah, we'll leave that to say, uh, yeah, go ahead, Doc.
I, you know, I just don't see how it's going to help bringing these invoices to City Hall. I mean, that's one more thing City Hall's got to do. And these people aren't going to wait three months. You know, from my experience, from what I was told before, they're not going to wait three months for their money. And I just don't think City Hall needs to have another thing added to their plate. I just, you, you're not going to gain the money. That, that you're going to lose by having somebody do it. I mean. Truthfully, I don't think you're going to find anything if, if you just let us do it like. Yeah, just turn it back. I mean.
Councilor Baylor?
Yeah, I think, I think the better option is the way it was ran before, the, the vendors collected it or didn't collect it. Just bringing it back to the city. And I, I think if we give clear, clear definition on how this policy is supposed to work to the vendors. That would be the way to do it. Let them do the, do the work of saying, no, this is not, uh, this is taxable, this is not taxable. And they'll do that. If you give them clear definition, they have full understanding, they will do that. Because their kids go to all these schools, events, and they go to the pool and everything else. They know it, it takes all of us to support this town, so let's just throw it on them and they'll happily do it, I'm sure.
Kristen, Councilor Smith.
Thanks. Yeah, I guess I, I, I wanted to give this a chance to work and see what it's like. I mean, we can go back if we need to, but I, I feel like we're, we're specifically giving this exemption. Because we're trying to support people, uh, purchasing local. And not a lot of places I don't think have exemptions like this. And I think there's a lot of programs, I think people, I'm plenty used to. Applying for home energy rebates where you have to spend the money first and then you get reimbursed by the state. That happened a bunch of years ago when I put in a new furnace. Um, it, it's not a, that's not a new process. I think people are not unfamiliar with that. And I don't know, it sounded to me like the, um, finance staff is willing to give it a try. And I think it's going to be easier to be more consistent that way, and then we put less burden on the business owner. So I guess I would like to see us try it, but that's me. Thank you.
Go ahead. Can, can you talk and use the, use the mic? Tom, Tom and Kristen can't hear you from back there if you're not close enough to the mic.
I'm, uh, my name is Dottie Winman, uh, two four five E F drive. And, uh, owner of the net off and, uh, end user. And also beginning to be a very large construction project. And the many things I just want to say is if you're planning to reimburse anyway, that's the thought that you're going to reimburse. To have that extra step in there and to have that labor involved in doing it and then just like that. They've been doing it that in the past and they, and it's clear and clear instructions on how to do it. Then it just seems like a unnecessary step to, if you're planning to reimburse anyway. Then why wouldn't you do it right at the get go when you, if people follow along the way they've been doing and follow the practices and it's clear. What the rules are about it, to not have that extra, um, step in there built in. If this, if you're already planning to reimburse it, uh, then the business owners are, that are the ones that are doing these major things. To me, as an end user, to have to come and then come in and, and submit it afterwards when knowing that. I want to support local people as much as possible and, and then with these larger. Type purchases and to know that they're going to handle it and take care of it and I'll get that right then instead of waiting later.
Okay, thank you.
There's only a handful of the whole business list that is North Star Lumber, uh, Barber Store.
Yeah.
You're only talking about four or five that go into building, a building project.
Yeah.
Uh, you're not talking about every single business.
Yeah.
And you're not four or five businesses when they've been doing it anyway.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense.
I got you. Council just needs to decide if they're going to propose that or, or not. And there were going to be one ordinance or two. You want to combine them or? Two separate since we need more information about one.
I think it would be best to do them separately. Um, I think it would be, um. We're trying to reinvent the wheel here and I'm getting a headache. Um. I'd like to move back to the invoice, which was working. And I think, again, I'm going to not place blame on current city staff. But I think the lack of communication between city and business community has always been a failure on our part. And I also feel that, um, we're caring and we're getting good input from the community. The people who are highly affected by the building permits. Um, and I built a house here and I worked locally. Um, and it's still expensive, but we wanted to support local. And I think that's what we need to do is, um, go back to what was working. Fix what wasn't working in our communication with the community and the residents and the businesses. And make it simple for everyone. Cause we all want to contribute and see our community succeed, but some of this is just getting too much.
Okay, so Holly, can we, we're, we're up against our time limit now. Can we get two ordinances, one to. Whatever changes need to be made to make it, uh, the cap applied to per invoice. Or per sale, however, however that needs to be worded, and another one, um. Back to. If you get a building permit, you prepay the tax, what it was before, uh, on the billing permit for building materials.
Yes, but mayor, I just want to make sure I understand that second one. Um, so I think you just want to go back to an exemption, a straight exemption for construction materials and services. But we'll keep the update to the definition of construction materials and services, which council worked a, a lot on that definition. And so that would go to the application of the exemption. Do you want to remove the refund application process? Because when we first started having this discussion, we had two procedures. And the idea was we should move to one and we picked the, you know, council picked the refund application. But from what I'm hearing, really council maybe wants to go back to the exemption, which most, uh, which many use. Do you want to do that and just get rid of the refund application and leave it at the exemption process? Which is not a difficult change, but I just.
Cheryl might be too new to know, but.
Yeah.
Do you know in the past where, did we have any people come in and asking for refunds or many?
Uh, no, because when they come in for a billing permit, the exemption card was part of that process.
So I think we had many of those anyway, so.
Okay. So then at least for council's review, at least of the initial draft, I'm just going to narrow it. I'm going to maintain all of the work that you put into those, the construction materials and services and the parameters of the refund. And just apply it into an exemption. That would be an, they'd get an exemption card and the exemption would have those parameters. Is that, is that?
Yeah, I'd just like to get a draft. We can, you know, we got to have two readings and a public hearing on this before anything goes through. And then a thirty day advertising period, so we're, we need to get going on it. And I guess also to be clear, we can do these things all of our time and getting these sort of ordinance through them plays also all the implications, information that we need. Right, we can have that, whatever you've got. I know you can't provide too detailed of information, but in general. Hey, sound good?
Yeah, sounds, sounds good.
Okay, our public hearing, uh, time is up, so we will adjourn the, or our work session. And we will adjourn the work session. If they need a minute to. Okay, well. We will call the city council public hearing, January fifteenth, order seven oh four, uh, roll call please.
Casey Kinsman?
Here.
The Exastro?
Here.
Wendy Raining?
Here.
Tom Baylor?
Here.
Christmas man?
Here.
Kathy Sherman?
Here.
Jen Jones?
If you think you would have forum, public hearing is on resolution oh one twenty five oh one. Resolution of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, amending the finance department section of the twenty twenty five fee schedule. As had been approved in resolution twelve twenty four thirty six on December fourth, twenty twenty four. Is anybody here to talk about the fee schedule? I think there was just an error in the. The last step. Anybody? If I want. Twice hearing, no public here, uh, public comment, we will adjourn public hearing. Yeah, ready? See a break? Okay. So the regular city council meeting of January fifteenth, twenty twenty five, do order seven oh five P M. Uh, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Kathy Sherman, here. Tom Baylor?
Here.
Wendy Raining, here. The Exastro?
Here.
Lucy Kinsman?
Here.
Ken Jones, absence.
Here we have forum approval of the regular agenda. Any objection to the agenda changes? Hearing now, the agenda will be approved. Disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. Hearing now, communication by petition of visitors. We have no guest speakers, audience comments regarding agenda items. Anybody want to make comments on the agenda? Okay, seeing now, now we'll move on to chairperson representatives of boards and commissions. Let's see, Dr. Sanders here. Hospital board.
Hello, council. Um, it's been a bit since I've been in, so I mostly just wanted to come and say hi and let everybody know things are overall going well. Um, we continue to struggle like everybody with staffing and cost of things going up. But, um, overall, we're doing really well. The twenty twenty five is going to be a big year for us. We do, every three years, we do the. Uh. Really health needs assessment, so we'll be sending out surveys and asking for community input on that to see what things we need to improve on. We've also been looking at in twenty nineteen, N D E did a condition report for our building. And identified nine million dollars of, um, structural. And infrastructure things that we either needed to fix because they were broken or a violation of current safety codes. So we're trying to put together a plan and figure out where we can find funding to, um, do those repairs, so. That do answer any questions?
How much did you say?
In twenty nineteen, it was nine million.
Fifteen now.
Yeah.
Fifteen now.
So, yeah. Um, we're, uh, we recognize that the cost of healthcare too has just gone up a lot, so we are trying to find. A way to fund some infrastructure, um, looking at federal and state resources as well as grants. So I imagine that I will be coming back soon to you guys to ask for support, is that staying, because I identified sources, but we really do need to put together a plan, not just to fix that. The items identified in the condition report, but actually get our hospital ready for the next twenty years.
Okay, thank you, any questions for Dr. Sanders?
You only have one pen in your hair. I mean, my daughter used to say, oh, now mommy has five pens in her hair today, not a good day.
One's not bad.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, well, you're doing a great job, Dr. Sanders, but this is just a kind of a comment on healthcare in Cordova. My wife and I have been doing a lot of traveling and I'll tell you what, you wanna get in to see a doctor, you got a month wait. You know, it's hard. And we're just so spoiled, we've mentioned it several times each other, so spoiled, we get a little bump or bruise or broken this or that and. We're in down there at the Cordova clinic in about two hours and they're finding specialists in Anchorage or Seattle and we're on a plane and we're going and. Boy, that is not the way it works out in the lower forty eight, I can tell you, you could, you gotta wait a long time. So you better be self healing, so our, our, uh, health system in Cordova may be small and. Maybe they patch you up, ship you out, but they take care of you and so God bless it there, that's, I hope people understand how good we have it there.
Things, it's a valuable resource and you have to use it to keep it, we really need everyone's support, so thank you for that reminder.
Yes, I have a question as well, I, I know you're involved with the emergency part of our response, so how are things sitting right now with emergency medical responses from our department? As far as personnel. Their ability to respond to that.
We have, you know, we have just been so lucky with the volunteers that we've had, but it is becoming harder and harder. Um. We've been looking at ways that the hospital can help support the, the ambulance response, but that's gonna take some time to change and so. Right now, we just need Cordova to continue to rally and support our volunteers as best we can and. There are some options that we're looking at, but it's not a quick solution.
Yeah. Anything else for Dr. Sanders? Thank you for the work that you guys do there, thank you. The school board is meeting now, I believe, so. Any other boards and commissions here? Okay. The student council report this time, so the consent calendar reporting. Call the roll on.
Okay.
Consent calendar.
Dave Astro?
Yes.
Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Wendy Raining?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Patty Sherman?
Yes.
Day, I minutes, we're in the consent calendar. We have no consideration of bids or proposals or contracts. So reports of officers, mayor's report, I don't have. Remember what's happened in the last month, planning, but. Um, maybe I don't have any specific thing to report. Any questions? Uh, Cheryl, did you have a manager's report?
Not really, I mean, Sam's not with us this evening because she's not feeling well, but, um, Kevin does have a public work update, I'm sure.
Yeah, Sam, or Sam was very sick this afternoon, so. I excused her from the meeting, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to give a quick update on some things going on, um. So in, uh. Late, uh, twenty twenty four, you requested, you direct staff put out a request for proposals for the land disposal of the lot on La Fever. Um, that R F P went live last week, so that was posted on our website as well as the normal notice locations that we post, uh, those sort of notices which are where the, uh. Council packets and those things go. Um, so that is open currently, will be re, that'll be closing in early February and then it will go through the review process at planning commission before coming to council for a decision. On any proposals that are received. Uh, just a quick update on the windstorms that we had, we had a minimal, minimal damage to any of our city structures. Uh, Cordova center lost a couple of shingle holes, but nothing major, so we're getting those patched up. Um, a couple of trees fell across the road, but we got those cleared right away, uh, luckily there was no damage to any private property that was caused by any city. Uh, trees or, you know, things, so. Um, but unfortunately, you know, a lot of people in the community did suffer a lot of damage, including the, uh. Uh. Buildings on Main Street that you may have seen are starting to come down, the old road building and the building next to it. Um, the front of the building was starting to get ripped off as part of that windstorm and so we talked with Dave and he is getting those, uh, done up this week. Um, just been one other thing, um. Some of you may remember back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, uh, we worked with the state and FEMA to get funding for, um, an avalanche and landslide hazard mapping project. Um, they were finally able to collect all the data, um, they tried to collect it all in twenty twenty three, but. Due to the, uh, wet winter or summer that we had, they weren't able to do that, so they wrapped up the data collection last summer. And they gave us a preview of some of that information, they're wrapping up the report. And, uh, processing that data and they will be coming back to town. Uh, sometime in early March to give a presentation on that and to officially, uh. Publish that report, so then the city will have all that data and those maps and then we can discuss, uh, what anything we wanna do of that, so, uh, more to go on that.
The science center, the old science center building.
Yes.
Did it have some damage from the wind?
I mean, it has damage, I don't know if it has any damage.
There was a video, somebody had a video on Facebook.
Oh, I wasn't.
Had a piece of cam doing, doing this in the wind.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a look at it, I hadn't heard that report, so we'll take it back.
It was on this corner, I don't know if it came off or, or what, but yeah, plenty, there's plenty of, plenty of roof damage.
Yeah.
Lots of trees, I guess, shared glacier video was.
Yeah.
Was something, um. Where are we at with the purchase agreement for the lot on Center Drive?
Uh, yeah, uh, so I don't know if this was mentioned at the last city council meeting we had, um, we have hired a new city planner. Um, they started in early December, so I'm working with them to, uh, get caught up and understand all of our processes and she's currently working on the negotiations with that. Uh, contract, I'm anticipating that to be coming to you probably in February, but it is in August.
Yeah, sounds good. Any questions for, for Kevin?
Um, is fire marshal, where?
The fire marshal did resign. Yes, so, uh, they fired their job post students, being, I believe has been, but, uh, for the fire marshal, so, yeah, we are in need of that along with. As many volunteers as we can get, just in general, as always, so.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Kevin. Okay, clerk's report.
Okay, I just have a few things, a reminder that the Cordova regular city election is March fourth. Early voting starts February eleventh. Um, up for election is one mayor seats, three city council members and two hospital service board members. Um. The last day to declare candidacy is February fourth. We have a few, um, for the city council. Um, and the. And the school board as well, um. But none for the hospital so far. Um, next, uh, we also included a short letter in the pocket. Um, from myself, just. Summarizing my trip to the A A M C conference and everything I learned there and thanking the council for that opportunity. Um, and then as you all are aware, Susan is out on vacation and she should be back the twenty seventh. That's all.
Thank you, any questions for clerk?
Uh, do we have any applicants for the mayor and the city council of the city?
One.
Can you give us the names of those applicants?
Um, yeah, I can do that, right? In public, definitely, so, um, the mayor seats Kristen Smith. Council seats Ken Jones. School board, Anna Merritt and Grafton Shakora. And then not the hospital.
And they have hospitalized two seats too?
Yes.
Okay, well, for the public out there in Bradyland. We need some applicants for lots of different things, so. Any other questions for clerk? Thank you for filling in and. Learning all you can and. Being here for us, appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Staff reports in your package? Questions, comments on those?
Yeah, uh. I appreciate the city investment update on our permanent capital management, uh, from Blake Phillips, that's nice to get those, appreciate it.
Any respondents? Is it there? Questions, comments on those?
Yeah, I guess.
Oh, go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, and, uh, Mr. Burton's suggestion, um. We did put it away, we put it in permanent fund and we're not gonna spend it till we get things figured out, so we kinda got half of what he asked for.
I think he would approve of what we did, so. Okay, moves us on to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance one two two six, an ordinance of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska. Amending for open municipal code section one one point zero eight point zero two zero. Harbor commission to reduce the harbor commission from seven to five voting members, this is first reading. So moved.
Second.
Councilor Baylor?
Yeah, I support this. Uh, it wasn't that many years ago that there was talk of eliminating the harbor commission because we weren't getting enough. People to attend meetings and that's, that's changed around a little bit, but I think we need to get back to five. So I support it.
Doctor Sherman?
Um, yeah, I had wanted to hear from the current harbor commission and they did, um, discuss this of their agenda in, well, at the previous meetings, so, um. And I guess it's difficult to get forms, so I understand that.
Yep, the harbor commission was in favor of, of this. Uh, let's go down the list here, um. Counselor Kinsman?
Um, in support of them.
Counselor Astro?
Yeah, in support, we only increase it because of the interest in self harbor bills, so makes sense to reduce it back down.
Counselor Raining?
I defer to the commission if they feel they need five, I'm supporting it.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, I support it.
Jones was absent, so. Uh, all those in favor of ordinance twelve twenty six on first reading, say aye.
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 Close. Here's your names, we have no unfinished business. Uh, no miscellaneous business pending agenda, C I P list, we just did that last time. Calendar elected unofficial's list, any pending agenda? Twelve twenty four thirty six on December fourth, twenty twenty four. Don't move. Second. Counselor Kinsman?
Yeah, I'll just say it was, I mean, uh. A clerical fix. That's nothing else to discuss on it.
Counselor Astro, Edric, just clean up. Anybody else? Everything? Okay, uh, this is the resolutions, first only time we'll see this, so, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Close. Here's your names, we have no unfinished business. Uh, no miscellaneous business pending agenda, C I P list, we just did that last time. Calendar elected unofficial's list, any pending agenda? Next meeting is. February what?
February that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, and I don't know what we need to do to bring number ten over, go change the land disposal maps when the status change, not great vote. Further disposal post status change. I don't discuss it, I don't know what we need to do to make that change.
So we do an annual updating to the land disposal maps every year and I was planning on just bringing that along with that, so it'll probably get to you in March or April.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. I didn't want to forget about.
Which one was that?
Uh, number ten.
Yes, uh, future agenda.
Yeah. Is the officials committee one there? We need to decide what we're doing with those committee.
Yeah, what did we do, um? We had something before council. On that, did we? Was Susan working on something?
For the fisheries?
Yeah.
I mean, it says council needs to determine how it don't seem, so we need to determine the exact makeup.
I'll have to look back into that.
We dissolved both of the commissions and made a new one. Combined them into one, or whatever it was that we did, but then we were going to, we still needed to. Set up the makeup of that.
I'll make none of it.
Yeah, I think it's important that we have that, I think they, they should, they should review and possibly even maybe toward the end. But certainly review with, uh, C D S U, the proposals put into the board of fish.
It's just been sitting yellow for a while and I think we need to move on, get something happening. Oh, that's that somehow.
Man, yeah, I would like just, just some traction on just a bonding. Conversation or having budget cycle, we have, whether do it before we get into summer. Of, we have asphalt plans that are gonna be in town, we, I know the school's working on their kind of long term vision for high school, but that's any that we have in this community. So I would like to see that.
She wanna discuss bonding in general?
I would like to see what, what are bond, when our bonds are. Okay. Set to expire and what are our future list of items that need to be bonded, that could be bonded and how that would work.
Be nice to combine that with the planning, the strategic planning session, which involves all those things, uh. So maybe the status of our bonds after strategic work.
So, yeah, that's pretty much, you've got a spreadsheet with everything.
We do.
The bond, so we could put that on as information next, next meeting.
Yes.
And then.
And Sam, I mean, we're maybe good.
Plan a, uh, planning meeting with the.
This now would be a good.
Yeah.
In connection with that, we are bringing forward, um, we are going out to reissue the bonds, I don't know if that's the right term. But, um, so that will be coming, you guys have passed a resolution, I think in December to have that process start, so we will be bringing forward more information and we can give an update at that time. Susan.
Okay, I will think of it, we got an extra week this time to prepare, so. Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead, Tom.
I think it was mentioned, but yeah, number seven, the strategic planning work session. If everybody was in favor of that, it'd be, I thought it'd be kinda nice to do that before, we're talking possibly three seats changeover, different mayor. It'd be interesting to get. The sitting council that served and now they've been in for a while, kinda get their thoughts on that planning and goals and then. When the new council gets set after a couple of months, they perhaps should take. when the new council gets set after a couple of months, they perhaps should take it up again and see if they're aligned with that process, but just a thought, because you're gonna lose some people that have been around for a little bit, and then I'd still like to revisit that economical development property tax exemption, uh, number thirteen.
Okay, so we get with, uh, with our next meeting, we meet with Sam and decide when we wanna schedule that. Well, you can give us for next meeting, the bond, current bond information.
Yes, for sure.
Hey, anything else we need to consider February fifth meeting, I'm sure staff will have.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we're not moving forward in planning work sessions, I'm, we're gonna run out of time, so when, when do we need to put a date into some of these things? Or a work session, but I think that's how some of these get on here, yeah, yeah, let's discuss it, let's discuss it, not saying when. We need another first session at sixteen AM.
Second meeting in February, we could do that.
Okay, for strategic planning.
At least start the conversation.
Yeah, perfect.
And work session.
Yeah.
Yeah. With the planning measure? No, yeah? Without them to start?
Without them to start, I think, just, I mean, I would see, just getting us all caught on the same page, big picture. What's doable, what's not doable?
We might pass on to the new planner that we're going that direction and will eventually want them to, so that they can start their discussions on it, because they only made ones a month, so.
Correct.
At least at their February meeting, they could be thinking about it. Anything else?
Thank you for that.
Okay. Audience participation, anything you wanna chat about or? Is that all you're gonna say?
Are you kidding me?
They were counting on your mark.
No, I appreciate everybody's, um, everybody's time tonight and, and we wanna be part of the process to get there and we, again, we tried to get ahead of it last time and we didn't. Just a couple of things of going through kind of this budget process and, and what I've come up with and some things that we need to work on is is the city budgeted uh five hundred and fifty thousand income coming from our remote sales tax. And that doesn't sound like a lot, right? You think about, well, it's gonna be a lot more than that. But to, to generate five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of internet sales tax, that's eight million dollars that's gone from our community. That's a big deal. So we have to figure out how to make it easier to do business in Cordova. And the sales tax cap and the sales tax and the, the revenue, revenue generation from, from businesses that come and do stuff in Cordova, we have to figure out how to get those businesses back. We can't keep losing business to Valdez, we can't keep losing business to Whittier and to Anchorage when we can do business locally and in the community. And, you know, doesn't take much to drive down Main Street and see buildings disappearing and not and not being um there when we need them, so let's try to figure out a way to make it easier to do business in Cordova and try to get some of that income back. But uh, I appreciate everybody's help and uh, I'm here. See ya.
Thank you, we appreciate your input. Anybody else? Anything?
More of a question than I have.
Yeah, show on up.
Uh, not, not a good man, uh, on a netlog. I just wondered during the work session, you're talking about trying to figure this out with the sales tax, in the meantime, I'm not sure, as an end user, do I yet, are you going to, what is the plan for this interim period until you make your decision? Is there any information on, do we go ahead and get a building permit and start saving receipts or, uh, what is the plan that you have? Is there a plan for the interim?
That's a great question.
That is a great question, yeah.
As somebody who's
This opportunity.
It's happening.
Yeah, left or, or counsel.
And I was talking about, it's very seriously like, okay, how we're gonna conduct this and adding seven percent onto things or, you know.
That's why I wanted to get it moving now, so.
But I just wondered in this interim time, should I just start saving all receipts or do I go get my building permit now or I didn't get that? I think I was confused with what was going on.
I would get your building permit and save your receipts.
Yeah.
And, and, and then you're first on the list when we figure out what we're doing.
But it's still not, it's somewhere last year's plan right now.
But I don't, but there's not, I'm not, I, I, I think the exemption card, but see, that's what I was confused of. Okay, I'll just start saving receipt. Get the building.
Yeah, get your permit, save receipts, we'll have to discuss with the finance, we'll have to discuss with Sam about where we'd go in the interim then.
Mr. Mayor, can we direct them to reach out to copies?
Yes, definitely, certainly.
Yes, because we want you to get your building permit.
I mean, we are in favor of, of uh making Main Street live and flourishing.
What's your schedule as far as?
We're hoping to start in March, April.
Yeah, okay, we should have it all ironed out.
But I'm already paying
Right, I agree.
Sales tax right now on my worker that is out of town, but like, that's the remote part, because some of my, some of my people were paying that sales tax now, but I mean, and they're big numbers.
Yeah.
I need every penny.
Yeah.
To be able to have the inside get to be done as well, the outside.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. Okay, for those online, there's uh Dr. Sanders and three other staff members besides Cheryl and the clerk here, uh, all the other guys left, so. Puts us down to council comments. I will go with this one. Remember Jones is absent, so Counselor Zastro?
Oh, God, birthday, lucky man. Um, yeah, I really appreciated all of the participation during our work session with our larger retailers in town, that's hugely helpful that they're continuing to be involved and we're gonna have lots of questions for them along the way as we're figuring this out. We're really good about the direction we're going, um, and I, we've, I've said to many of the council members here, we can't explain it to ourselves, have to explain it to the public how we're asking them to pay taxes, so. Um, I think a little simpler is great, I'm really looking forward to seeing the implications of what we're proposing to do, how it will potentially affect revenue. If there is an effect, if there's not, we'll get if it's good, if it's bad, but that information will be helpful, but nonetheless, I think the direction we're going is by far the best way compared to the work. Um, thank you staff for all the work you're doing, you're kind of winning. So I appreciate all your, your support for us, so.
Hey, Counselor Sherman?
I'm actually prepared for you to call on me tonight, um, so I appreciated all the, um, participation in the meeting tonight, that was really helpful, I still need to it's hard for me to understand this, just like Dave Zastro said, and, um, I don't know how we expect other people to understand some of this, but. So we're gonna, um, I always wanted to give, I know I'm preaching to the choir who are here, but for those of you who are online listening, I have been working hard to change my mindset in twenty twenty-five and to support my community with not only my heart, but with my dollars. And I, the people who are here tonight have made me think about this, but C C M C saved my life last year. And I'm here because of C C M C. And I think we all need to appreciate and recognize what Mr. Baylor pointed out, that we are so lucky and so blessed to have such quality medical care here in our community. And I am now in the process of having to go six months out to get appointments with specialists, so I appreciate when I called and they put me in within an hour, so it's very wonderful and we all should support our healthcare locally. Um, the netlog saved my life this week because this is homecoming. Um, there's no florist in town anymore, my grandson wants a corsage for his date. So I went down to the netlog and, and Dottie showed me how I could make felt flowers, so. And then I went to kick her room blooms and she's gonna have tulips this weekend, so I'm gonna make felt flowers with real tulips and I'm supporting two local businesses and one of those will floss my grandson, thinks I'm cool. Cause I can make flowers and then my husband and I this winter have been lectured by younger friends like Mr. Zastro and Mrs. Mike about getting um ice bugs so we don't fall and break our ankles or other parts. And Cordova Gear had a twenty-five percent off coupon if you, my little newsletter that from them, so we went down today and I bought ice bugs and then I bought sandals for the next vacation and then I bought um reflective light strips because teenagers don't think they need to have anything bright on their black coats. So there's four businesses right there that in the span of about four days, well, C C M C more have helped me this week alone in this community and I think what we all need to do is you know, we all see it costs more to do business here, but you know, those ice bugs were more expensive elsewhere, those sandals were more expensive elsewhere. Someone else came into the store and said, oh, I bought this chocolate in Washington, it was more expensive and it's right here in Cordova. Tulips probably are cheaper somewhere else, but I can't get fresh flowers in Cordova in the winter. So I think we all need to think hard about our community and how we can support our community each and every day. And it's not gonna kill us and I'm sorry I went on too long. That's it.
Thank you, Kathy, yep, uh, supported. Counselor Baylor?
Yeah, well said, Kathy. Yeah, I wanna, I talk about the building process and, and I've, I've said this several times and I think the owner of the netlog is a testament to what I've been talking about, you go in and get your building permit. You get your, you pay your taxes upfront, you get your exempt card and you're off and running and just building your project. Those tax dollars that she's talking about, that means a lot on your upfront of the project. This idea that we're gonna give people tax breaks on the other end, that doesn't help the builder, that doesn't help this person get their, their place built. This is when they need that cash, the taxes get divided by twelve, get, get paid once a month or they get paid every six months. But having that money in your pocket to buy the two by fours, to hire the plumber, that's vital and that's what promotes construction and building in this community and that's what helped me build, I don't know, twenty-five houses in that community. I think it's vitally important to our construction industry and to the other industry, but particularly construction industry is that, that tax exempt card and everything that goes in that that building that she's building from the foundation to the studs, to the drywall, to the paint, to the towel hangers in the bathroom should fall underneath that tax exempt, so if they get that project done and get that operational, start bringing tax dollars into this community and providing jobs. That's what you call about promoting business. And that's why I think that program is a great program and we need to reinstate it and make it as simple as possible, as simple as it was. And thanks for everybody that commented and everybody that's there at the meeting tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kinsman.
Yeah, thank you, actually, it's, I've been sitting this and we're doing rework, I probably feel it's appropriate for me to just apologize. I mean, as part of the rework is, I mean, on any of us, but I can claim be accountable for myself and so I apologize for the role that I played in allowing us to have to rework, cause confusion, cause any delays in anyone's construction and, um, so with that, there's, all I can do now is an opportunity and staff and a rework for staff, that's another, I mean, that's a rework for everyone because I'm just gonna say me, because I wasn't informed enough, didn't ask the right questions and so I look forward to an opportunity to refocus and recenter and be more engaged in, uh, really this, this stewardship that I have to the community, so.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Ranny.
What he said and what she said, and I really liked what he said and what she said, so with that being said, I just appreciate everybody tonight.
Uh, thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, well.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, um, uh, this might seem like nitpicking, I wanted to comment on in the minutes from, I think it was the December fourth meeting. There was a comment in there that Councilmember Jones was saying our tax, our property tax amounts have doubled since twenty twelve. And when I looked at those figures, um, in inflation adjusted dollars, the amount of tax that was collected in twenty twenty-four was not double what was, uh, collected in twenty twelve, it was more, it was, um, seven hundred and twelve thousand more, um, than twenty twelve, so I just I, I feel like it's important, you know, if we're gonna be throwing around assertions like that, it's important to use accurate figures and how, how, our, our tax policy is important, that's what we learned tonight, you know, that's, and so I just think we it, it's good to be more, um, accurate about, um, about our revenues and where they're coming from. So there's that comment, I am thankful for Dr. Sanders' leadership at C C M C, it's, it's really halted the downward spiral that plagued C C M C for years, I feel like her leadership has helped stabilize, um, stabilized providers, stabilized the financial situation and really has turned around C C M C's reputation, I think, so that's, um, a huge thing to be thankful for. And I also just wanted to say, I mean, I, I certainly I agree with all the other comments that were made, but I do appreciate Councilmember Baylor's experience in the construction industry and kind of what he brings to the discussion um, about the sales tax, so thank you for that. Thanks.
Hey, well, amen to all the comments, uh, that were given tonight, uh, welcome to the uh, new planner and any other, um, staff that we had join us, thank you Cheryl and Brett for stepping up and, and, uh, adding to your, your roles and, and filling in, uh, from our permanent staff, I appreciate the, the extra efforts that you, you all make. Hope staff gets well and enjoys their vacations. And, uh, just, uh, forgot to mention it earlier, but for the public out there and everybody, this is Cordova tip-off weekend for the basketball games, this game start tomorrow at three thirty, I believe. And, uh, Friday and Saturday, there will also be J V games. So we'll start at nine in the morning on both Friday and Saturday and, and go all day, so plenty of basketball to go homecoming was Saturday, was Saturday?
Friday.
Friday is homecoming, and I think there's a senior senior night on one of those nights too, so, um, recognize our, our local our local youth, so it'll be a fun time for them, we'll have plenty of extra people from town, hopefully they'll get a little time to wander the shops a little bit, so. Um, we don't have any executive session scheduled, so our business being done, we will adjourn to be. Thanks, everybody.
Bye, Tom.
Cutting you off early, Tom.
I like it.